Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council on Wednesday, May 29, 2024. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Charlin? Mr. Coghill?
Here.
Ms. Gross?
Good morning.
Mr. Mosley?
Here.
Mrs. Kale Smith? Mrs. Strasburger?
Here.
Mrs. Warwick?
Here.
Mr. Wilson? Mr. Lavelle President?
Here.
Six members present.
Thank you. Please rise for the pleasure of allegiance. Remain standing for a moment of silence.
Our pleasure allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Our next order of business is to amend the agenda. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The agenda has been amended. Our next order of business is proclamations and given we have our mayor here this morning, I want to begin with Mayor Ganey. If you would please come forward. Councilman Mosley, if you would please come forward. And we have the men from Imani Christian Academy, if you all would also come forward. Restrain? Restrain?
That's that wisdom he was talking about yesterday.
Don't argue. Don't argue with fools. Did you know who's who? Yes, sir. So I'm gonna turn it over to Mayor Ganey and Councilman Mosley. What I will simply say for my part is, I've always known Imani Christian Academy to be a tremendous academic school. But in recent years, in addition to the tremendous academics, they've also became a very strong powerhouse on the athletics. And so we want to spend time to congratulate them, acknowledge them on their achievements, and thank them for all they bring to our city and our region. With that, Mayor Ganey?
Good morning, everyone. Good morning. Can we give a round of applause to the back-to-back champions, Imani Academy? Can we give them a round of applause? Come on, come on, come on, y'all, come on. Before I go any further, Carl, this is your district. I want you to come up and say a couple of words, then I'll come back and finish it up. Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Ganey. It's really an honor to be here. You know, this is, you know, becoming a habit for the Imani Christian Saints. Can we give them another round of applause? I was only a candidate this time last year, and I was able to come out to the school and acknowledge the excellent play that you exhibited last season. So now it's good to actually be a member of council and being able to honor you in this official capacity as well. And I see my buddy over here who played elementary school basketball with my son Thaddeus at Colfax, where they were undefeated, fourth and fifth grade, you know. So this is a full circle to see some of my friends and some young people that played with my son before he gave up basketball for baseball full-time. But, you know, the school, from an academic standpoint, but also from athletic standpoint, you know, is just a great beacon of light, you know, for the entire district, a true source of pride for the East Hills community. You should be, you know, very proud of the way you comport yourselves as young men and went all over the state racking up wins and look forward to being back here this time next year as y'all go for a three-peat. So congratulations.
They've been winning so much that they got upgraded to 6A, right?
Yes, sir.
Coach, won't you come up here and talk about that?
First and foremost, we just want to say thank you to everybody that's here, everybody that supports Imani Christian Academy. We want to say that without God, none of this is possible, which is the ultimate basis of what Imani Christian Academy is about. It's about instilling the faith that through Christ, you can do whatever you set your mind to regardless of who you are and where you come from. And that's what these kids embody, and that's why we were able to win back-to-back PIA-A champions, and that's why we're also going to be able to go to 6A next year and win a WIPU championship and a state championship. So, thank y'all so much. Thank you. Avery Wesley, come on.
Captain, come on up. Go ahead, Captain. Whatever you want to say, Captain. You the captain.
Hello, everybody. I just want to thank everybody for coming out.
Again, we want to congratulate you. Winning back-to-back championships is not easy. Winning one championship is not easy. But to win back-to-back championships, man, I ain't got nothing but love for y'all. And I just want to appreciate every coach here for turning young boys into men and making sure that they just don't grow old, but they grow up. And what you're pouring in them is amazing because it takes knowledge, wisdom, and strength to be able to win back-to-back. And one more time, can that just clap? Can we give them a standing ovation? Come on, there we go. There we go. And whereas Imani Christian Academy is a private Christian school, it is located in East Hills of the city. Imani Christian Academy is comprised of elementary, middle, and high school. And whereas Imani Christian Academy's mission is to serve all students, all the students and underserved, transforming them from academically, socially, physically, and to launching them into a new life to demonstrate what contributions they can provide to not only the city, but to America. And whereas this year, the Imani Boys Basketball Team were once again section champions and WPA-L champions, on Thursday, March 21st, 2024, earned them a place in WPA-L history, adding their names to the shortlist of District Seven schools to repeat as state champions. And whereas the Imani Boys Basketball Team has the unique distinction of winning consecutive WPA-A, WPA-A championships and achieved the rare distinction of also winning consecutive PIA-A state championships, '23 and '24, I will mention their names. When you don't mention your name, can you stand up to the front? Marcus Williams. Come on, clap for him, clap for him. Ross King. Robert Slade. Kalen Holmes. Christian Brown. Avery Wesley. Sean Gordon. Nathan Brazil. Destin Hubbard. DeShawn Burnett. Correct me if I'm wrong, Isaiah Bradshaw. David Compton. Cameron Rice. Braylon Green. Donovan Gordon. Shavon Allen. Coaches, if we could have you stand here when I call your name. Head coach, Calvary Wilson. Assistant coaches, Anwar Wesley, Drell Warwick III, Evan Scott, and Derrick Taylor. Athletic director, Clifford Simon Jr., and CEO and head of the school, Paul...tell me, uh...
Paul Lou.
He's on, right. Is he here? Ladies and gentlemen, please rise for back-to-back champions called Imani Christian Academy. Yeah. Carl, you got any closing remarks?
I want to thank everybody for coming out. You know, this type of enthusiasm, you know, is the type of energy we need to pour into our young people. You know, oftentimes, you know, young people from communities, you know, like East Hills are often overlooked. But, you know, when we show, you know, this kind of enthusiasm, this type of positive energy imported into them, you know, that helps them, you know, carry on, you know, their journey in life. And who knows where they may go. I do want to give a shout out. Ross, I didn't see you over there. Ross King, actually, I coached him for a couple of years in the Edgewood League before I became a full-time politician. I coached a lot of basketball and baseball. So it's good to see Braylon Green, who played with my son at Colfax for two years, and they won a back-to-back champion. So Braylon, you're just right, your trophy case, you know, must look like Michael Jordan by the time you get done, because every team you're on, you just keep winning, from Colfax all the way to Imani. And Ross, we had a couple of great years over at Edgewood on Saturday mornings and Wednesday nights playing basketball. It's good to see Ross, you continuing to develop your basketball career. I'll tell my sons that I ran into you today. So I just want to thank everyone, you know, for coming out and continue to support young people, continue to pour into them with this kind of enthusiasm and provide outlets for them, you know, so that they can, you know, capture their greatness and go on to their path as we pass the torch to the next generation one day. So thanks so much for this opportunity.
I know, before I turn it over to Daniel, we do have a city icon in the audience that I want to recognize for being a historian out of years, is Dr. Larry Glasgow, one of the best that ever did it in this city. I'd like for him to stand. One of the greatest historians on African-American living in this city, and I appreciate for all the research and development you've done. And I think we should give him a big hand for all he's done to move us forward.
Yes, if we can now, excuse me, if we can now take a picture, if all the gentlemen would go back to where you were standing earlier. You want all members? And if all members could please come forward. We'll allow them to take a picture, and then we'll join them. Then we get one with the mayor, then one with mayor and all of council.
Look over here.
And then they wanted one with all members.
Right here. Go on, here.
And then, Councilwoman Strasburger? And Mr. Glasgow and all those with you could probably begin making your way forward.
Well, I'm fortunate to have the Glascos as residents and constituents in the district represent. So I'm happy to say a few words and then read the proclamation. And I also want to turn it over to my colleagues, if any of my colleagues would like to say a few words as well. So I'll jump right into the proclamation. Whereas Larry Glasgow was born in 1940 in Zenia, Ohio. And whereas Larry received a BA from Antioch College and earned both a master's degree and a PhD from the State University of New York at Buffalo, where he completed a thesis on the racial philosophy of Mexican thinker Jose Vasconcelos and a dissertation mapping the ethnic social structure of Buffalo in the mid-19th century. And whereas Larry joined the University of Pittsburgh's History Department in 1969. And whereas, also in 1969, Larry and his wife Ingrid were married on August 2nd and will celebrate their 55th wedding anniversary later this year. And whereas, over the past five decades, Larry has researched, written, and taught on the important subjects of race, urban society, and Pittsburgh culture, with a particular focus on the history of Black Pittsburghers. And whereas, this scholarship has cast an important light on the double burden faced by Black Pittsburgh, high culture in the community, Black radio, jazz, prominent Black Pittsburghers, the migration from the Shenandoah Valley, and many other topics. And whereas Larry has authored or co-authored six books, including biographies of notable Black Pittsburghers, August Wilson, Kay Leroy Ervis, as well as editing the WPA History of the Negro in Pittsburgh, a collection of Depression-era essays written by Black Pittsburghers with the support of the Federal Works Progress Administration. And whereas Larry has also written numerous scholarly articles, provided commentary to local and national media, participated in several documentaries, and held regular public talks on issues of importance to the community. And whereas Larry was the concept and design creator for the amazing African Heritage Nationality Room in the Cathedral of Learning. And whereas Professor Glasgow's classes regularly enrolled hundreds of students per semester, a testament to his credibility and skill as an instructor. And whereas Larry's service as a professor, academic, and community voice have positively impacted not only his students, but our city, region, and country as a whole. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby celebrate the 55 years of outstanding contributions Larry Glasgow has made to our society, and be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Wednesday, May 29th, 2024, to be Larry Glasgow Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
May we have a motion?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Well, I just want to say how grateful I am to be honored by you. It's been a long time in Pittsburgh. I was from Ohio. I came here not knowing much about it, except my father, I remember as a little kid, he told me once, he said, Joe, that was his name for me, because I was going to be the next Joe Louis, he believed. There was a, that was a mistake. He said, Joe, there's a place called Pittsburgh. In Pittsburgh, there's also a place called Wiley Avenue. There's also a place they call Deep Wiley. He said, you want to remember that. He didn't tell me why I should remember it, but I certainly did remember it all those years. So Dad, here I am, back Wiley, Pittsburgh, just like you had hoped. So it's an amazing city. I can say that because I'm not from here. But I tell you, the degree of history, accomplishment, achievements of Pittsburgh really deserve all the investigation that I and others can give it and all the publicity. So again, thank you very much.
I want to note that fellow historian Barbara Burston is also here, who's co-authored some books. And I don't know, I don't want to put you on the spot to say a few words. But she's also, she's also been, you know, I think, a colleague of Professor Glasgow's for many years, thanks to Ken Love, who has a documentarian who has, who helped us organize this whole proclamation. Do any of my colleagues want to say a few words? And if not, yeah, would you like to say anything, Councilman Mosley?
I just wanted to say a few words just because of how much history you and my father have. I know, you know, you're very fond of my father. I know my father, you know, is very fond of you as well. And being that, you know, my father's an unofficial historian, and I've kind of followed him, you know, on that journey, you know, growing up, you know, I've heard, you know, many stories about you and a lot of the history that you share in your books has been, you know, shared with me through the longstanding oral tradition, you know, of our people. So, and Ken Love is in the house as well, who did a film, you know, for my father. So this is very much like a reunion. So I just wanted to send that on behalf of my father as well. Congratulations.
I just want to briefly say that Larry was the very first person that we interviewed for the Teenie Harris documentary, One Shot, that I was privileged to make. And that was about 1999-ish. And I've known Larry since I was, I went to Pitt, Larry came about the same time I did. And the Teenie Harris film might not have happened without Larry because we had to do a quick demo on it for the funding. And Larry absolutely made that happen. Thank you, Larry.
We'll take a photo. Can we get all members, please?
I just want to say that Larry and I team-taught for, what, at least a decade, Larry. It was a class on Blacks and Jews. And the first day, I wore three-inch heels to try and get up on the same, close to Larry. But that was just one day, and I never wore three-inch heels again. But Larry is an amazing person, not just because of his professional qualities and accomplishments, but he's just a general wonderful man, a real mensch, and somebody who really has worked with our community, the Jewish community. He used to do tours on the Hill with myself and with Nick Lane for years. And he's just a person, really, we can all admire, not only for the man, what he's done, but as I say, for the kind of person he is, bringing people together.
And Councilwoman Strasburger, would you wish to do the will of council now?
So we'll be presenting a will of council along with the proclamations because we have some of the fiercest advocates for this bill that's being deliberated in Harrisburg here with us in the form of our Pittsburgh firefighters. And we know that the work that all of our first responders and our emergency personnel do can cause post-traumatic stress injury. And we want to treat that as other injuries. So this is what this is about. I probably won't read the entire will of council in its entirety, but I want to thank my colleagues for considering, considering this will of council. So whereas, post-traumatic stress injury consists of the same set of symptoms as post-traumatic stress disorder characterized by exposure to a traumatic event as identified by the American Psychiatric Association and documented in the American Psychiatric Association's Diagnostic and Statistical Manual of Mental Disorders. And whereas, a 2023 study published by the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration's Office of Emergency Medical Services found that first responders, including law enforcement officers, firefighters, emergency medical services, clinicians, and public safety telecommunicators face unique occupational stressors and may be at elevated risk for suicide. Whereas, and whereas that same study found the following, first responders accounted for 1% of all suicides from 2015 to 2017. And when compared to the general public, some common risk factors for suicides, such as history of suicidal thoughts, previous suicide attempt, alcohol substance abuse problem, were significantly lower among first responders. And whereas, Pennsylvania House Bill 1632 of 2023 would amend the Pennsylvania workers' compensation law to allow for post-traumatic stress injury as a result of a qualifying traumatic event to be compensable injury for the first responders. Whereas HB 1632 would eliminate a situation in which first responders are forced to choose between seeking quality treatment or foregoing their wages and suffering financial consequences just for seeking medical care. And whereas, according to the 2018 study conducted by the Ruderman Family Foundation, when compared to members of the civilian population, first responders experience heightened levels of depression, suicidal thoughts, and more because their exposure to trauma is, and unfortunately, all too common part of course of their service. Whereas barriers to mental health treatment for first responders should be removed, and HB 1632 is a critical first step. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh makes known its support for Pennsylvania House Bill 1632 of 2023 and encourages its swift adoption by the Pennsylvania General Assembly. And be it further resolved that this council encourages the Allegheny delegation, the Pennsylvania State Senate, to support this vital legislation as well as any companion legislation that it may be introduced.
May we have a motion to approve?
So move.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations. Thank you very much, Councilman.
Thank you to my colleagues.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank Councilwoman Strasburger for introducing this and writing it and working the past couple of weeks to help overcome any obstacles that might have been in the way. And thank you to Council President Lavelle for helping us get this introduced, and all the council members for their support and standing with their first responders. It really means a lot to us. This will of council is going to go a long way in helping to show the state legislature. in helping to show the state legislature the support that they have here in Pittsburgh and around the state. I know firefighters from around the state are doing the same thing that we're doing. And House Bill 1632 and its Senate companion will go a long way in helping the first responders to get the mental health treatment they need. Our first responders, our police, our firefighters, our paramedics, every day see the most horrifying and traumatic events multiple times a day that the general public may see once in their life. And we certainly struggle. We're not immune to the struggles that come with it and often are forced to self-treat, self-medicate, or not get any treatment at all. So this will go a long way in getting the first responders here in Pittsburgh and across Pennsylvania the mental health treatment and coverage that they really need. So thank you, Councilwoman Strasburger, and thank you for the rest of the council for supporting.
And can we get all members for a photo? I also just wanted to mention that this bill has already successfully passed the House, and so now it's really targeting the Senate. So it's made some good progress this year.
Thank you all for being here. Our next order of business is public comment. I would like to remind everyone that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which may be before the council and profanely will not be permitted. After you are called, please restate your name for the record, provide your neighborhood. You'll be given three minutes to speak. Our first registered speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller.
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Bill Hoover, and Oslo Norway. Vote by voter verification for whom. An uncensored freedom of speech and public comment are key to what I do. Global Intelligence Society candidate for president 2024, globalintelligencesociety.org. I use a 21-discipline, A-plus info intel frame and my koanyah, jiki, kutsa way, saza, brain-body-penetrator tal on government compliance and corruption. A concern is ver der dick, zero deutsch for corruption. City, county, government, CC, corruption. In Amorado and Katena, and Ganey Lavelle, in our view, are lax on corruption. Definition of corruption in government, as I see it, we citizens think that due to an oath, USA citizen or county or country representative is committed to do X, but then actually does anti-X, similar to going into a black hole. All stuff in, no stuff out. KJK kata, two arms up, key of D. From Africa, Nigeria, hausa, baki rami, black hole of fashawa, corruption. We expect the CC District Attorney to do a periodic table, column 11, CU 29, genuine investigation. So a false investigation is corruption. To do a PT, column 11, AG 47, ingenuous, true arrest, not a false arrest, which would be corruption. To do, column 11, AU 79, godlike audited charges, not fraudulent devil charges. That's corruption. And such a threefold case exists in the CC legal baki rami. Is it possible to take legal action against the District Attorney Zapala and the county executive in Amorado? The answer is yes, and the probability is .99 that will happen very soon. From Asia, Nihongo, we have been encouraged to, to overcome fuhae, corruption, via communication. SI 2 RLM, 12 January 2024. She says, you know, communicate. We want to hear from you. So I did. She didn't respond. That's corruption. The Office of Municipal Investigation investigates all of you people, all the counselors and the mayor, but nobody else in the, in the government. That is corruption.
Thank you. Our last registered speaker is Ralph Williams.
Yeah, thank you, President Lavelle. My name's Ralph Williams. I live up in Allentown section of the city. I live in the Calituri Plaza High Rocks. First of all, Mr. Coghill, at the last meeting that I spoke at, you were not here. I want to congratulate you on your tiny homes idea. I presented to council here the night, the day, the meeting that you were not here, that I proposed that you please put those up in the Highland Drive VA site, which the city owns. But I do like the idea. Thank you. Also, I want to talk a little bit about HACP, the Housing Authority City of Pittsburgh. And I've been here at least four times in the last two years to talk about this. Housing Authority City of Pittsburgh is a mis-run organization. And the thing is, I'm very disappointed that, for the government housing that they provide here and the way they run it, manage it, is a very disappointment. I think Castlevania, I think Joy Miller, the Public Safety Director, Castlevania, the CEO, I think both of them need to be fired or asked to resign or step down or retire. It's time for new management down there. It's time to get some of these knuckleheads out of these buildings that sell drugs. It's time to get some of these people out of here that commit crimes. It's time to get some of these people out of here to make the residents of the buildings, you know, a hassle. Okay? I have a lot, we have a lot of problems in this building, and the management keeps giving me excuses every single time when I come up with a suggestion to fix it. All right? Including, we have people coming in our back door, which is, it still hasn't been fixed for two years now, trespassing, all different types of stuff going on. All right? I've made suggestions. Nothing is done. I've spoken to the mayor. He was at my pastor's retirement celebration at the end of 2022. Promised me, Marigney promised me he was going to do something about this. Nothing has been done. Okay? And I urge this city council to please get a review or an audit, do something about the public safety in this building here in Allentown and also out on Warrington Avenue. All right? After 6:00 PM, we need to have two B cops walking the beat. We have issues with the Hilltop Tavern. I brought this up to this council. We have issues with people shooting each other right out on the street. And I can hear the gunshots in my apartment. All right? There's a lot of problems here that need to be fixed up in this community, and it needs to be taken care of. And I want to thank you for your time. Have a great day. Hope you had a good Memorial Day weekend.
Thank you. That exhausts our list of registered speakers. If there's anyone in chambers wishing to speak, please come forward at this time, provide your name, neighborhood for the record. You'll be given three minutes to speak.
Hi. My name is Michael Bonnywell. I'm a resident of Pittsburgh. I don't really have a neighborhood. I'd just like to, you know, congratulate the people with the Pittsburgh basketball team. And I'm wondering why B. Marshall still doesn't have his money yet. But the thing I'd like to focus on today is the homelessness problem and all of the disparity of the corruption about the government that's going on here. I mean, Ed Ganey and his administration are giving his money and his contracts that are supposed to go to other people, to his affiliates and cronies. I mean, like, how are we serving the people when in fact he's saying liberty and justice for all when we all stand up for that flag? If it's really liberty and justice for all, then we'd be doing our responsibility, not our right to the people, like we've been talking about for the last 60 years in this country. We're talking about the responsibility that we have to our fellow man, to our fellow human being. Stop treating people like they're subhuman. You go to the light of life, they, what's your number inmate? Line up for chow. Lockdown's at seven o'clock. That's not how you do these things. You don't dehumanize these people. This is not a FEMA camp. Okay? We need to start treating people like people. Doesn't matter if I'm black, white, yellow, green, Muslim, Buddhist, we're all the same people. We're all in the same together. As it rains upon the righteous, it rains upon the wicked. And I'm tired of seeing the disparity between rich, poor, white, black. Let's all come together and unify and stop being divided amongst ourselves while people in your power seats, I'm not saying all of you are bad, are making bad decisions. And I was talking to Erica, and she had a great idea, and I agree with her, PMC, and the colleges need to start paying their due of taxes. I mean, PMC is a private organization, but they own all the hospitals here in the town. And you're telling me the overhead versus the profit margin on healthcare, there's no room for taxes to help us contribute to this beautiful city? We have abandoned homes for no reason that are falling apart, beautiful homes. I've slept in some of these homes. I'm homeless. I hop inside these abandoned homes and I sleep. And I look at how big these, some of these things are and how beautiful they once were, and we're letting them go to shambles. Look at this city and look what you're doing to it. It makes me sick. Okay? Now do your responsibility to the people and build the faith and democracy this country is built upon for liberty and justice for all. Where we go one, we go all.
Thank you. Next figure, please.
Why y'all look scary? My name is Carmen Brown, and I'm from the East Liberty area. And I just want to just say something real brief. I just hope, you know, when you, when you do this vote, that the reinstate, hopefully, I pray that you do reinstate B. Marshall's contract for Juneteenth. But also, I want to also mention to Councilman Mosley, you have not had any meetings in our communities. So I'm just, I asked you this before. When are you going to start having real meetings so we can address our concerns to you about what's going on in our district? Also, I wanted to bring up about the speed bumps. We need speed bumps over in, on Paulson Avenue, where the rec is. We need the, we need speed bumps over by the park, and we need speed bumps right in front of the rec. I live right up the street from the rec. So do Ed Ganey. He lives down the other side of the street. But, you know, we definitely need to be discussing that. That's why I'm wondering when you're going to start having these meetings. We need to be talking about, like I said, a lot of neighborhood things. We have a lot of, especially in my neighborhood, I'm starting to see some things that they used to didn't have, you know, a lot of garbage, you know? And, you know, there's been some strange activities going on over there. So we need to have these meetings ASAP. So I'm going to keep coming here, and I'm going to keep bringing it to your attention. I will see you in the street, and I will stop you, you know, every time I see you because we need to start having meetings to talk about Ninth Council District's concerns and issues. Thank you.
Next speaker, please. Next speaker.
Hello, Council. My name is William Parker. First, I'd like to start off by thanking Anthony Coghill, Councilmember Coghill, for voting no the last time that this Juneteenth issue came before council. That was a strong vote, and that really sent a message. I also would like to thank Councilmember Teresa Kel Smith for holding off on that vote. That was strong for you on your behalf, too. And I don't see Councilman Sharlin here, but if he's listening, I want to thank you, Sharlin. Really appreciate what you did. That showed real leadership and courage. Like I said, when I was down here last time on this topic of the Juneteenth, I didn't want to come back down here for this. I didn't. Because this is what it's going to lead to. It's going to lead to me pointing people out, getting loud, getting boisterous. Okay? And I don't want to do that. But this is a situation that requires that sometimes. Okay? It's just not me. See, when y'all hear my voice, y'all really hearing thousands of concerns from residents all over the city coming out of me. That's what you're hearing. It's just that they sometimes don't have the affordability to show up. But you got to understand in this situation right here, B. Marshall was going to face some criticism, some type of hatred, because he puts on events that uplift the black community. But never did I think that this hatred would be coming from our city's first black mayor. You see what I'm saying? So, and to put this in perspective, Ed might not even be our mayor in the next couple of years. So how do we know that the next administration is going to want to run Juneteenth on their own? How you know that they wouldn't prefer for a private organization like B. Marshall's to run this? So by you voting for this, it's actually helping Ed Ganey because right now he's tripping. Okay? His administration is tripping over there. You know, we've heard people come down here in support of B. Marshall getting this money. We haven't heard anyone come down here and opposed to him getting this money. This RFP was put out at the last minute. Okay? And when this happens, what we got to do is honor what was put in place before, and then we'll hash whatever we got to do for the next year. That's the appropriate thing to do. You know, sometimes it makes me wonder, who are y'all worried about sitting right with Ed or the people that you were elected to serve? You see what I'm saying? So, you know, I seen just a few minutes ago, someone showed me that there is going to be some resolution that's voted on. I thank councilmembers who worked on that and put that together. I really do. I don't really want to go into, after seeing that, I don't really want to go into deep, other details of what I wanted to say further. But hopefully that we could get this money to B. Marshall, we could have an event, and we can move on from here. And peace. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Thank you, Council, for allowing us to be here and speak. My name is Tony Moreno. I am a resident of the North Side. I've read the agenda, and if I read it correctly, we're going to vote on B. Marshall receiving his money, which is very confusing to me because that was done a few years ago. Regardless, I hope that happens. This wasn't about not giving anybody else resources. I'm happy that also in this agenda, Bounce is going to receive money because there's a lot of money out there to be spent, and it's being hoarded and sparsely spread out according to who gets favors and who doesn't. But right now, that doesn't matter. What we need to do is recognize what council has shown us, and that's their inability to govern. The fact that this is even on the agenda is a problem. If this would have started in the very beginning like this, all we would have said is, why are they voting on something that's already been voting on? I don't understand that. But that's not for this moment. What we have to do is make sure that this money stays accountable because it's starting to run out, and there's a scramble on how to get it spent. For example, in Mr. Coghill's district, that Fourth Division, for about the last 32,000 years, they've been talking about getting it fixed, and they haven't. They finally, again, for about the third time, came out, stuck shovels in the ground, and thank goodness, they put a fence around it. But that building still hasn't started. As soon as you came out with that resolution, promising that this money was going to be spent there and fixed, there should have been a big, old gigantic front-end loader tearing up that ground and starting building, but they didn't. So I'm not going to hold my breath and wait for that to happen. What we need to do as a community now is go back and look at things that have been voted on before, make sure that those monies have been spent correctly. Let's make sure that going forward, that these monies are distributed correctly because now we see how you guys and ladies intend on operating. Where you go and how you hide and what you do, you've revealed yourself to us, and it's very disheartening. It breaks my heart that we all have to come here and tell you, please do the right thing, and then make you do the right thing. That is not our position. You are representatives of us. You are representatives of us. Mr. Wilson is representative of me and my neighbors and everybody on the North Side. But it doesn't feel like you're operating in our best interest like Mr. Parker said. You have all become lackeys to the Gany administration for whatever reason. I don't know what they have held over you, what they do to you, how they frighten you into doing whatever they want because nine oh, except for this last vote, you come and do everything that they ask. Thank you for your time.
Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. Seeing no further speakers, we'll move on to the presentation. Okay?
You know, I was waiting for somebody to come on up so I can go ahead and smooth it out here. Number one, I love the new administration that Ed Gany got. All right. Number two, I see the future development and I see there's no quick fix. I'm disappointed with, you know, what happened with B Marshall. Yes. All right. But the responsibility is about the history of the Juneteenth, period. Now that's number one. All right. You know, nobody's bigger than the national holiday today. Just think what I just said. You know, government, you know, employees getting paid, you know, for holidays, et cetera. You know, I'm just giving you the whole picture of the national holiday. And I'm humble that we have a ceasefire right now. Okay? Because we know some things are going to happen to make the Juneteenth celebration continue. You know, I'm very humble about the 11 years that Mr. Marshall has contributed to help us have an identity in Pittsburgh. Not only Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. All right. It just carried on over within 11 years. And then we have our national holiday. Now discrepancies, you know, I could see some people being angry and pointing fingers, you know, saying Uncle Tom, you sold us out, you know. I, I'm just keeping it real. You know, that's how I seen the whole commotion. You know? But I'm going to tell you something. I love our mayor and I love our administration because I seen some things that transpired, you know, when I went down for Kay LaRoy Ervis in Harrisburg. And I witnessed about the criminal, you know, traditions and, and the accolades of, of our poor people, you know, with the ignorance and the education. I seen people that's in possession to go ahead and carry the torch with Kay LaRoy Ervis have developed. You know, you need to go ahead and do some research on our leader. Yeah. Yes, he's done, touched us and he fought, you know, and that's when I came along saying aloud, I'm black and I'm proud. This is after he did his thing at the Capitol in Harrisburg. Now, my main thing, I want to go ahead and contribute. I seen people that was like, reaching out to our people, our young people. I seen educators in place to go ahead and interact with our, our future children right now. You know, we already know there was a crack generation and we had the COVID. But there's been a spiritual resource that's been missing. And I seen that redevelopment again when I was at those meetings. And I want to tell you, keep on doing the good thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Next speaker. Seeing no further speakers, we move on to the presentation of papers, beginning with Councilman Sharlin, Chair of Human Resources.
Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilman Robert Sharlin presents Bill 523, Resolution Providing for the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Pittsburgh Community Broadcasting in an Amount Not to Exceed $10,600 for Advertising Related to Fair Housing and Equal Employment Opportunity for the Year of 2024.
That takes us to Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Safety and Wellness.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Innovation, Performance, Asset Management and Technology. Councilman Mosley.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Deborah Elgroes presents Bill 524, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement or agreements or amendments thereto with Planet Technologies, Inc. for Microsoft Product Training and Support at a Cost Not to Exceed $315,000 over three years.
And now, Councilman Mosley, Chair of Intergovernmental Educational Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilman Kahari Mosley presents Bill 525, An Ordnance Amending the Pittsburgh Code Title IX, Zoning, Article One, Section 902.03, zoning map by changing from residential single unit attached very high density district to local neighborhood commercial on property roughly bounded by Hamilton Avenue, Dummerland Street, Tioga Street, Cinnabar Way, and Zenith Way, all in the Allegheny County Block and Lot System, 13th Ward.
Councilwoman Kell Smith, Chair of Recreation, Youth and Senior Services.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Teresa Kell Smith presents Bill 526, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of Parks and Recreation on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into financial sponsorship agreements with PNC Park, Clearview Federal Credit Union, and Citizens Bank for the 2024 City of Pittsburgh Independence Day Festival and City Park's Summer Concert Series at no cost to the city.
Thank you. Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Finance and Law.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilperson Erica Strasburger presents Bill 527, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Lamar Advertising in an Amount Not to Exceed $24,247.15 over one year in full and final settlement of a claim for damage to Lamar Bill Board Number 3086 from a city ES recycling vehicle on September 19th, 2023. Bill 528, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Omar Usid Kisi in an Amount Not to Exceed $3,272.47 over one year in full and final settlement of a claim for damage to his parked vehicle from a city ES vehicle on June 23rd, 2023. And Bill 529, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Sedgwick as TPA for Trinity Health in an Amount Not to Exceed $3,484.66 over one year in full and final settlement of a claim for damage to a vehicle from an accident with a city DPW vehicle on March 9th, 2023.
That takes us to Councilwoman Warwick, Chair of Public Works and Infrastructure.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Barbara Warwick presents Bill 530, Resolution Providing for a Supplemental Agreement or Agreements with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania's Department of Transportation for Local Costs Associated with the State Route 60 Project, providing for the payment of the costs thereof not to exceed $7,590.37, an increase of $1,342.37 from the previously legislated contract authorization.
And Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Bobby Wilson presents Bill 531, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into an agreement or agreements with Urban Design Ventures LLC for services relating to the ongoing technical assistance and consulting related to the home ARP program for a total not to exceed of $120,000. And Bill 532, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into an agreement or agreements with Urban Design Ventures LLC for services relating to the administration of the city's Community Development Block Grant, Emergency Solutions Grant, and Housing Opportunity for Persons with AIDS Programs for a sum not to exceed $105,000 over three years and for the payment of the costs thereof.
Thank you. And for myself, if we could begin with the three sponsored resolutions.
Councilman Daniel Lavelle presents Bill 533, Resolution Further Amending and Supplementing Resolution 538 of 2016 as amended entitled, authorizing the mayor, city clerk, and/or director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to enter into a contract or contracts or agreement or agreements with Granicus, Inc. for software upgrades, server hosting services, and annual maintenance of Legistar Agenda Management and Video Streaming in order to extend the contract an additional 12 months for an additional cost of $51,895.94 for a total cost not to exceed $488,802.4. Bill 540, Resolution Amending Resolution 911 of 2023, which reappropriated Federal American Rescue Plan Fund funding by updating the approved projects as outlined in Exhibit A, Version 7. And Bill 541, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director, Office of Management and Budget, to enter into an agreement or agreements with the Poise Foundation in connection with services for a 2024 Juneteenth Celebration for the sum of $125,000 over one year and for the payment of the costs thereof.
Thank you. If we could now do the two appointments.
Bill 534, Resolution Appointing Tanika Harris as a Member of the Housing Opportunity Fund Advisory Board with a Term to Expire April 30th, 2024. And Bill 535, Resolution Reappointing Lena Andrews as a Member of the Housing Opportunity Fund Advisory Board with a Term to Expire April 30th, 2028.
And we need a motion to either interview or approve.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Both appointments have been approved and we have two communications.
Bill 536, Communication from John H. Patterson, Executive Director of Pittsburgh Community Television Corporation, submitting PCTV's 2023 Annual Report. And Bill 537, Communication from Jake Pollock, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, submitting acting pay requests on behalf of the Department of Public Works for Jacqueline Balzer per the acting pay policy revised in June 2018.
Need a motion to read, receive, and file?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. That takes us to reports of committee for final action, beginning with Councilwoman Erica Strasburger presenting on the Committee of Finance and Law.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilperson Erica Strasburger presents Bill 519, Report of the Committee on Finance and Law for May 22nd, 2024, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 472, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor to Enter Into an Agreement or Agreements with Bounce Marketing and Events to Assist in Supporting the Arts and Related Artistic Production Services for a Public Juneteenth Event in 2024 for an Amount Not to Exceed $125,000 for the Payment of the Costs thereof. Bill 473, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Mark A. Winters for Arbitration Services for an Amount Not to Exceed $10,311.38. Bill 474, Resolution Providing for the Sale of Certain Property Acquired by the City of Pittsburgh at Tax Sales, Items A through AN, 225 Wick Street, 223 Wick Street, 221 Wick Street, 2303 Center Avenue, 2301 Center Avenue, 2518 Wyandotte Street, 5316 Hillcrest Street, Zero Lacston Street, 7004 Leamington Avenue, 7002 Leamington Avenue, 7,000 Leamington Avenue, 7,100 Monticello Street, 7030 Monticello Street, 335 Hale Street, 333 Hale Street, 327 Hale Street, 7925 Susquehanna Street, 417 Chatsworth Street, 4500 Monongahela Street, 4502 Monongahela Street, 119 Millbridge Street, 965 East Warrington Avenue, 125 Millbridge Street, Zero Proctor Way, 1520 Arlington Avenue, 1526 Arlington Avenue, 417 Michigan Street, 233 Augusta Street, 613 Herschel Street, 611 Herschel Street, 513 Lovelace Street, 2680 Sacramento Avenue, 2678 Sacramento Avenue, 823 Swisman Street, 1217 Voss Camp Street, 2652 Ellis Street, 323 Venture Street, 215 Suncrest Street, 1635 Maryland Street, and 1633 Maryland Street. Bill 475, Resolution Providing for the Conveyance of, by the City of Pittsburgh of Certain Property Having Been Placed for Sale to Adjoining Property Owners in Conjunction with the City of Pittsburgh Sideyard Programs, Item A through F, 7317 Idlewell Street, Zero Hazelwood Avenue, Zero Freeland Street, 210 Sylvania Avenue, 2651 Veteran Street, 2415 Deal Avenue. And Bill 480, Resolution Further, Further Amending Resolution Number 855 of 2011, effective December 29th, 2011 as amended entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2012 Capital Budget and the 2012 Community Development Block Grant Program and Approving the 2012 through 2017 Capital Improvement Program by Adjusting Various Line Items in the Conformance with City Council's 2012 Capital Budget Amendments by Reducing District One Neighborhood Needs by $3,751.84 and Increasing Public Safety Cameras by $3,751.84.
You've heard the reading and the table of the bills. Is there any discussion? Councilman Coghill.
Yes. On Bill 472, you know, I thought about this a lot over the weekend with the Juneteenth funding, 472. Okay. First of all, I, I want to thank you, Mr. President, for your leadership on this. When, you know, we were trying to find a compromise, you stepped up. And we're in my office after the discussion at the table last week. And that's the type of leadership, that's what we elected you for. So, you know, I appreciate that. I really do. That's important that you tried to intervene and work things out for all sides here. I also want to, you know, thank Councilwoman Gross and Kell Smith for really even referring the fact that, you know, possibly use different funding to make B Marshall and Poise Foundation whole, which was important to me. And beyond that, you know, Councilwoman Kell Smith talks about, we should have a funding source separate for special events. We have lots of special events, right? St. Patrick's Day Parade, Pride, you know, festivities out in Bloomfield for Little Italy. There's a lot of things that I don't mind using taxpayer dollars for because there is a return. We don't see it on our bottom line as a city of Pittsburgh. But, you know, those businesses, those restaurants, those hotels, and the people coming in and spending millions of dollars in the city of Pittsburgh makes that a worthwhile investment. So I think we should, you know, I see how they hustle for these other events, trying to raise funds. So I support that idea by Councilwoman Kell Smith fully, wholeheartedly. I think we, we should look at that for next year and moving forward. So at this point though, I, I would suggest this, you know, and the reason why I didn't cosponsor the legislation today was because maybe it's a Hail Mary at this time, but I'm still hoping this council does what I feel is the right thing. And by cosponsoring that, I felt like I would have been conceding that, you know, we were going to proceed this way. But what I feel, you know, considering the timeframe as to, you know, the administration to throw their own Juneteenth celebration, the way it was done, of course, sits heavy with me. This still doesn't guarantee B Marshall gets refunded, this legislation today. It has to be, you know, vetted out and, and, you know, looked into more. So there's no guarantee there on, on, on my part that he gets funded at this point. So I feel the best course of action at this point would be, and I know it'll probably fall in deaf ears, but to abandon the administration's festivities for this year. Focus on next year. I don't begrudge them from throwing their own event, or the city throwing their own event. But I feel we should redirect this money back to its rightful source. That's the Poise Foundation and B Marshall. And this way, he can concentrate on what he does best and that's planning this event. This has been a distraction, I'm sure, for him and all the help that he has, you know, behind the scenes that we don't even realize. So, so I would support, you know, redirecting that money back to B Marshall and the Poise Foundation. Take that undue pressure off of him. Let's move on. And if city wants to throw their own celebration next year, I'll wholeheartedly support it. But it's going to take sources and funds and recognizing where they come from. So, so that's why I will not support it today. And I just wanted to explain that. I thank you, Mr. President, for, again, your attempt.
Thank you.
Yep.
Councilwoman Kell Smith?
Thank you. And I abstained last week, but I am going to vote no this week on this. But I do want to say that I was not opposed to, I wanted some clarity on some things, but I was not opposed to having the cities having a Juneteenth event. I felt like, I thought that there was some way we could all come together and the administration could have what they wanted, you know, and the... could have what they wanted, you know, and the residents that were behind B. Marshall's events could have what they wanted. I thought there was a way to work this out. And I still hope that they figure this out in a way to work together. But I, because I had other concerns, I can't vote for today, and I don't want to discuss those all now, but I will just say I just cannot vote for today because I'm not comfortable that this was done totally the way that we should have done it. And I want to say, I've been with B. Marshall and Juneteenth since he started, and I know he does an amazing job for the city. I know that people appreciate that he's fighting so hard for us and for the city, and they feel like he's really has represented the black community and fought for the black community really hard for 11 years to try to make these events happen. And so I want to thank him for the work he's doing, and I'm sure Bounce is going to do an amazing job. I know that she's done some other events in the city, and I'm sure she's going to do, she's going to do a great job, and I think it's great we're going to have two celebrations. That's great. If I could do it, as Councilwoman Coghill mentioned, I'd have a fund that we could, you know, really fund the things that bring an economic impact to the city of Pittsburgh, big events that have a history, a five-year history of doing events, has, you know, brings, you know, 50,000 people or 25,000 people or more, and has a certain dollar amount, economic dollar amount that we can track and say that this was because of this event, these events. I think we should fund those. I don't necessarily think we should be funding them with public dollars. I do think that it's a conversation we have to have with other people about things that we can do and putting it together, but I'm not going to belabor this today, but I really wish that I could vote today, but I just don't feel comfortable. And I don't know how I'll vote next week with the other, the other one coming forward. But for me, today I'm going to vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor to pass the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. The clerk, please take the roll.
Mr. Sharlin?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
No on 472, aye on all others.
Mr. Mosley? Mrs. Kail Smith?
No on Bill 0472, aye on all other bills in the committee. Thank you.
Mrs. Strasburger? Mrs. Warwick? Mr. Wilson? Mr. Lavelle, President? On Bill 472, six ayes, two noes. And on Bills 473, 474, 475, and 480, eight ayes.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required numbers of votes. It is passed finally. Councilwoman Kail Smith?
I just wanted to also, I forgot to thank you. I wanted to thank you for your leadership in this. You have, you have taken a lot of crazy text messages and phone calls from me, and I just want to thank you because I know you're trying to do your best and trying to please us all, and I just want to, your leadership has been amazing, so thank you.
Thank you. No worries. Councilwoman Barbara Warwick, presenting on the Committee of Public Works and Infrastructure.
Councilwoman Barbara Warwick presents Bill 520, Report of the Committee on Public Works and Infrastructure for May 22, 2024, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 476, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to enter into a license and maintenance agreement for limited-term public art with Bike Pittsburgh Inc., sorry, nonprofit corporation having a mailing address at 188 43rd Street, Suite 1, Pittsburgh, PA 15201, said limited-term public art to be installed on the surface of the public right-of-way in a section of roadway in front of the Carnegie Library of Pittsburgh Woods Run Branch located at 1201 Woods Run Avenue at no additional cost to the city.
You've heard the reading and the title of the bill. Is there any discussion? If none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor to pass the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Mr. Mosley?
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required numbers of votes. It is passed finally. That takes us to Councilwoman Teresa Kail Smith, presenting on the Committee of Recreation, Youth, and Senior Services.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Teresa Kail Smith presents Bill 521, Report of the Committee on Recreation, Youth, and Senior Services for May 22, 2024, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 471, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Parks and Recreation on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into a professional services agreement with Green Gears for Waste Management Services in conjunction with the City of Pittsburgh's Independence Day Festival at an amount not to exceed $22,300.
You've heard the reading and the title of the bill. Is there any discussion? Councilwoman Kail Smith?
Just briefly, I just want to thank Parks and Rec for making sure that they're sending information about RFPs, and I want to thank Director Pollak as well because he's also been working with us on different RFPs and the response, the responses to those RFPs, just different things, not for this particular one, but just over the, over the past few weeks, they've been really working well and helping me through this. So thank them for their patience with me.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor to pass the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharlin?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Mr. Mosley?
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required numbers of votes. It is passed finally. And finally, we have Councilwoman Deborah Gross presenting on the Committee of Innovation, Performance, Asset Management and Technology. Councilman Mosley, Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Deborah Elgrose presents Bill 522, Report of the Committee on Innovation, Performance, Asset Management and Technology for May 22, 2024, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 469, Resolution Amending Resolution 586 of 2023, authorizing the mayor and the directors of the Departments of Innovation and Performance and Public Safety on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement or agreements and amendments thereto with OST, Inc., as needed to fulfill a number of critical IT and device-related projects related to database management and migration and software development to replace key systems by increasing the approved amount by $200,000 and extending the contract by one additional year for an amended total cost not to exceed $626,346.2 over four years. Bill 470, Resolution Amending Resolution 360 of 2021, authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to adopt an existing government contract and enter into any related agreements through the National Association of State Procurement Officials Cooperative Purchasing Program with Cherry Road Technologies permitting the provision of cloud solutions to support the JDE application by increasing the approved amount by $1,341,442.56 for an amended total cost not to exceed $2,391,442.56.
Thank you. You have heard the reading and the title of the bill. Is there any discussion? If none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor to pass the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharlin?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Mr. Mosley?
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith? Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required numbers of votes. It is passed finally. That takes us to motions and resolutions. Is there anything for members? Councilman Coghill?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. In light of, you know, 470, Bill Number 0472 passing, I would like to jump on board and be a co-sponsor with the second-best idea that somebody came up with, and that was you, Mr. President. So if the clerk would add me as a co-sponsor to that legislation, and of course, I know we have to look into some things that Councilwoman Kail Smith has brought up, but yeah, I'm hoping that we at least follow through on that end and, you know, get the funding to Mr. Marshall. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Well, I wasn't going to say anything, but can I say I did tell you that I would work with you over the next, over the week, and if I feel comfortable, then I'd be added as a sponsor too. I just want to make sure all our i's are dotted and our t's are crossed, that's all. Thank you.
Completely understood. Thank you. Anything else? Councilman Mosley?
I just want to thank Council President for your leadership and, you know, identifying, you know, a solution. I know you work, you know, very hard, as well as want to thank Budget Director Peter McDevitt for his leadership, as well as Solicitor Friedsen, as well as our Research Director, Asha Carter, for assisting, you know, with this process, and hope that, you know, we can bring the public's attention back to a celebration and not in any conflict or contentiousness. So, you know, without your leadership, that wouldn't be possible. So it's been a pleasure to work with you.
Oh, is he good? That was good.
Anything else? If not, we have one meeting announcement this afternoon at 1:30. Council will hold our regular standing committee meeting. Speaker registration will close at 12:30. To register to speak at this meeting, please fill out the sign-up form on the Council meeting webpage or card to clerk's office at 412-255-2138. Need a motion to excuse the absent member, approve the minutes, and adjourn the meeting. So moved.
Second. Aye.
We are adjourned.